Welcome to the Year City Podcast where we get to know our neighbors so that we can be good neighbors. I'm your host, Aaron Williams. And before we get to today's guest, we're going to say a thank you to our sponsor, Scott Kentrell with State Farm. Hey, Gardendale, where can you get good neighbor service and surprisingly great insurance rates? At State Farm, because State Farm Agent Scott Kentrell is your one stop shop in Gardendale for the service you deserve at the price you want. So stop looking around, State Farm Agent Scott Kentrell is ready to help. Call 205-631-6201, or stop by his office at 313 Fieldstown Road for your surprisingly great rates today. That's 205-631-6201. Like a good neighbor, State Farm is there. Today, I'm joined by Brian Knox, who is the Councilman for District One in Gardendale, a local real estate agent and owner of Knox Realty, and is a well-established auctioneer. We're going to talk to him about his role in the city council, his career experiences, and sort of how he balances so many different careers at one time. Brian, thank you for coming on to the show.
It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for having me.
Absolutely. So I wanted to open up, let's talk about your role on the city council.
Yes.
What exactly does the city council do?
We're the legislative body of the municipal government of the city of Gardendale. We enact ordinances, we consider resolutions, we adopt budgets. The budgeting process is always very interesting, to say the least, being mindful of the people's money as it comes in from our tax base. And that's basically the business end of it, but there's also a relational end of it. I cover District One, which is mainly the northern end of Gardendale. And in that role also, I get emails and phone calls, hey, we have a pothole on our street, or we've got this issue, or hey, what's coming up that may affect our particular area? And then the other relational part of it is, I feel it's incumbent upon city councilors and the mayor, which most, if not all of us try to do a good job at this, is to get our known governmental leaders on a county and state level, if not even national level as well.
Yeah. So when you're getting to know these people on that state and local level, what's the benefit of having that relationship intact?
You know, it's the old saying, it's not what you know, it's who you know. If there's a situation coming up, economic development, let's say, of a particular area of your city, and it's somewhere or a type of project where county government could have a huge impact on it. If we've already established those relationships with those commissioners on the Jefferson County Commission, it's a lot easier to pick up the phone and say, hey, here's what we've got going. Let's have lunch, let's sit down over coffee and discuss how Jefferson County may partner with us on this. I have some past experience in state government as well. I served over 10 years on the Alabama State Board of Auctioneers Commission. And so that helped me to establish some relationships on a state level. It's the same thing. If there's a project that may behoove us to have some state involvement, hey, we can pick up the phone and call those people. And it's just great to have those relationships.
So it sounds like there's a big ability to ask for help, or to sort of see opportunity, hey, the state is working on this thing, maybe this could be beneficial for Gardendale?
Most definitely. You never want to get on an island, so to speak. The us four and no more mentality does not work. We have to have strategic partnerships. Businesses coming to our city many times reach out to us as a council and a mayor. And we provide incentives and do everything that we can to make this a welcoming atmosphere for business to come and thrive. It's the same way with county and state government. We want to stay out of the way of businesses, but we also want to partner with those businesses to make it as easy as possible for them to do business and to have a successful business. And we cannot do that alone. We must have that partnership with the county and the state.
Gotcha. How do you make it easier for businesses to do business?
A lot of times, it's just staying out of their way. As a business owner, I can tell you that there is no lack of regulation in our world today. And while you don't want to just have a free for all and say anything goes, you know, it's not the city, the state, or the county, or even the United States government's job to hinder businesses. What we try to do is to create and foster a good atmosphere for any type of business to thrive. Easy access because of good public roads, making sure that we provide opportunities. If the city needs to step in and perhaps offer an incentive to bring a particular size of business to our city, then let's work together and see if we can make that happen. There's a lot of moving pieces. And the biggest thing that we can do is be a help and just kind of stay out of the way where we don't need to be involved.
Yeah.
I think sometimes, I think it was Ronald Reagan that said one time, some of the worst things that a business owner ever heard is, hi, I'm from the government and I'm here to help. So it's a dance. We want to provide assistance, but also stay out of the way and let commerce happen.
So it sounds like there's a bit of a balancing act there.
It really is. There's a lot of a balancing act there.
How do you know that you're not, how do you know that it is being balanced? And let's say, you know, you said you're the legislative body. How do you measure the success of policy in that direction to say, hey, we want to make sure that our businesses and, you know, all of the other aspects and responsibilities that the city council has?
Certainly.
How do you, how do you measure that a policy is striking that balance?
We go back to the ordinances and resolutions and things that we do as a legislative body. As far as the ordinances, you don't want to make licensing a hard, arduous task for a business. We want to make that as easy and as simple as possible. There may be some areas there that we need to work on as a city, and we're working on that. When a business decides, hey, I want to come to Gardendale, the type of business it is can play a huge role in that licensing procedure. Do they need a liquor license? So the state has to get involved. Is there another type of license needed? And that may come in line with the county government getting involved. But the greatest thing that I can see that we can do as a city is to make sure that we don't put up obstacles with our ordinances. Let's make sure their ordinances are there for a reason, serve a purpose, but are not some intrusive thing that's going to hinder that business from being successful.
Gotcha. And you're just one of, is it five districts?
That is correct. And then the mayor.
And then the mayor. How much influence on the process does a single city councilman have?
That is a great question. I think that council person could have as much or as little influence as they wanted to.
Okay.
Going back to enacting ordinances that could hinder a business, I don't want to be a city councillor that every time we come to a meeting, that they know, oh gosh, here's Brian, he's going to be a problem, no matter what we bring up. The beautiful thing about our council, I'm proud to say that from the mayor down to all the other councilors, I consider them friends. Now, does that mean we always agree? Absolutely not. This table that we're sitting at right now is where we have our work sessions. And I can assure you, though we are all friends and will gladly grab a cup of coffee after a meeting together,
Yeah.
we can also fight like a couple of brothers. And I can be very opinionated. And everyone around this table can also be opinionated. What I think we've learned to do is we have learned how to do that respectfully. And, you know, we can tell somebody, well, I think that's a horrible idea, but do it in a respectful way. And I'm also not silly enough to believe that all of my ideas are good ideas.
I think, I think you're highlighting a couple of things that don't just apply to politics. Like, that's also extremely valuable in business as well. You know, you've got to be able to criticize the idea, not the person.
Exactly right.
That's, that's very important.
I think that's a lost art in our world today. One thing that we have to be very careful of as city councilors and as a mayor, it's so easy to have an opinion. And if you're not careful, that opinion can end up on social media. And we as leaders, let's just forget city municipal leaders, let's look at any leader, whether it's a ministry leader, a city leader, state, local government, whatever it might be. We have to be careful how we portray ourselves on social media. And just because I've got an opinion on something, doesn't necessarily mean that everybody wants to hear it.
Yeah.
So we have to be very careful about that. And you and I may be diametrically opposed on a particular issue. But these days, what we've run into is someone out there has decided that if you or I disagree, we can't be friends any longer. I fight that tooth and nail. I don't want all of my friends to be just like me. That would be kind of boring. Can we disagree? Can we vote for different parties and still be friends? Absolutely.
Yeah.
And so I think one of the things of being a leader, yes, we can vote on ordinances and we can, you know, pass these things and pass budgets. But part of my job also of being a city councillor is I'm a city councillor in my district to all of the residents. And so that means I need to treat them respectfully. I would hope they would offer the same thing to myself and my family. It's kind of a lost art today. And I hope as a councillor, and I'm one person, that I can kind of make that difference that, hey, you and I may be on opposite sides of the fence on particular issues, but I can still be your friend.
Yeah.
And I hope that comes across.
Well, there's a level of trust that comes in with that, where you're trusting that the other person is not, you know, trying to undermine you. Or it's like, hey, listen, we may disagree on this, but we're both trusting that each other is trying to be collaborative, right? It's like, let's both agree that the process is what we're trying to improve.
Exactly.
Even if we disagree on how to do it, we both agree that we have good intentions.
Exactly right. Exactly right. And that's something, that's a two-way street. It's ridiculous for me, as a city councillor, to take on an attitude of, hey, I've been voted into this position, and it's my way or the highway. That's utterly ridiculous. And I hope that I never, ever have that mindset. The same thing with a citizen. I fear that many of our citizens are not involved enough in the process of their city government. And perhaps some don't really have an idea how our city government is operated.
Yeah.
And one of the things, when I get an email or a phone call about a particular situation, I always end the email or the phone call like this. Let me invite you to our next city council meeting, where at the end of that meeting, we open the floor for comments. And we welcome you, John Q or Susie Q Public, to come to our meeting. And let us know who you are. Let us know where you live. Let us know, you know, what's on your mind. And I always open that door. Many times, though, nobody takes us up on those invitations. But we are an open book, and we're open. And we welcome that participation.
Yeah. Why do you think that people are not showing up to that? Is it just, just difficult to make the time for it?
You know, I'm a bit of a nerd when it comes to governmental type things. I was the kind of guy that would try to attend city council meetings as much as I could. That doesn't mean I was here every week before I was elected. I don't want to portray that. But I would come to a lot of the meetings.
Yeah.
But I enjoy this sort of thing. That's not everyone's cup of tea. You'll find that when things seem to be running smoothly, the council chambers will be very quiet and very empty during our regular meetings. If there's something a little contentious, zoning ordinance, or taxes, or something that may be a little more contentious, you'll find that there's more involvement. I think that's human nature. And we certainly wouldn't cast a negative dispersion of shame on people for not coming to the council meetings. Look, people are busy.
Yeah.
And I would hope that maybe some of the lack of participation is, hey, we trust our mayor, we trust our councilors, we believe they're doing a good job. We may not agree with everything that they're doing, but they're doing a good job. We're okay not being there. I just want, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure that our citizens know they are welcome.
Yeah, yeah. They're welcome to participate, but you kind of look at it as not everybody's interested. And some people have apathy specifically because they trust that the process is working.
Absolutely. And, you know, here's the thing about that. I am grateful that the folks in District One elected me. And I'm honored by that. But I also, I don't want to take that lightly. There's been a lot of trust placed in electing me to this position. And the Bible teaches us that there's wisdom in a multitude of counsel. All of my ideas are not good. And it's okay. I'll go back and look at my marriage relationship with my bride.
Okay.
My bride and I are polar opposites in many different ways.
All right.
She is a wonderful sounding board, and my wife can give me that look when maybe I don't have a really good idea. You know what? It's the same way serving on the city council.
Yeah.
I have a lot of ideas. Some of them are good, some of them may not be so good. I love it when the public though says, hey, Brian, have you thought about it in this way? Have, have you looked at it from this angle of how it's going to affect us? I need to hear those sort of things, because I'm not omniscient, I'm not all-knowing.
You need that feedback.
Feedback is wonderful. Now, there are some that no matter what you do, they may never be happy. And that's okay, too. That's personality driven. But it's good to get that feedback, because it keeps us on our toes.
I know exactly what you're talking about, because in my day job, I'm a designer. And you can't design a solution for a problem without feedback.
Absolutely.
You have to, you have to be able to put something out there, and everybody tell you why it's the worst thing they've ever seen, so that you can take that and bake it back into the design and come back with a new one.
Right.
So, iteration.
Absolutely. One of the things that I run into as a councillor, I have an idea, or we may collectively as a council and a mayor have an idea. Then the next question is, okay, where does the money come from? Well, that's all grand and good. You know, we don't have just an absolute basket of non-ending money. And we try to strictly adhere by that budget. And sometimes that can be strenuous, because we've budgeted a certain amount, and all of a sudden, there's this need that arises. Where does the money come from? So a lot of what we deal with is, okay, we've got so much money in the bucket, how can we make that money go as far as possible? Because all the great ideas are wonderful, but somebody's got to pay for them. And so you have to temper the great ideas that you may have with, okay, does it fit our budget?
Yeah. Well, you mentioned that you are grateful to the people of District One for electing you. What does that campaign process look like? When you decided to run, what inspired you? And then how did you go about doing it?
Oh, you know, I've been friends with a number of the councilors, some more than others, for a number of years, and the mayor. And I always said, because I was always civically involved, I was in the Chamber of Commerce, and I would come to the council meetings and things like that. And I would always tell them, if you ever hear I'm running for council, you have my permission to hit me in the head with the biggest stick that you can find, because I want no part of it. I wanted to work behind the scenes and do my thing and be a supporter. Alan Jerkins, who was the councillor for my district, who I have just an incredible amount of respect and admiration for, a wonderful city councillor that served our city well, came up to me after a council meeting one night. And he said, Brian, he said, I promised that I would only run for two terms. This is the end of my second term. Would you please consider running? And I laughed. And I said, you seem to have forgotten what I told you. And he said, just for me, please consider. I said, okay, I'll consider. Then the next day, we were at a Chamber of Commerce event, and the mayor came up to me. And then another city councillor came up to me. And I said, okay, I'm thinking about it, I'm praying about it. And quite frankly, I don't mean to over-spiritualize things. And you'll never hear me say, God told me to run for city council. If I felt like God had verbally said that, I would tell you. But I didn't feel that. But I'll tell you what did happen. I'm going down the road one day, and I'm listening to a minister on the radio that I listen to quite frequently. And I had already said that morning, why can we not have more godly people run for office in our country? And it was just aggravated, because we seem to have people that just don't care all over the nation, filling these positions. And just as clearly as you and I are sitting here, David Jeremiah, who was the pastor that I was listening to, not verbatim, but he basically said, the only way that we're going to have godly leaders is if godly people step up. And I could just feel the car closing in on me. Now, I do not purport myself to be the perfect Christian. I am far from it. I am just a forgiven sinner. But it hit me. Okay, Brian, mister, you're sick of all this stuff that's going on in the world.
Stop talking about it, start being about it.
Exactly. I was very convicted. And I believe, I will say that I do believe that the Lord, and I'm a born again believer, and I feel very strongly about my faith, I do believe that the Lord dealt with me that day, and basically said, okay, put your heart where your mouth is. And so here I am. And decided to run, scared my wife to death, because people can be mean. Quite frankly, I try to be a really nice guy. Sometimes I fail miserably, but people can be mean. And I was really concerned, okay, what's it going to look like if I run for council? And but I will have to say that it was a very positive process. And I'm honored to be here.
Yeah.
I really am.
Awesome. Well, how do you connect with the people in your district? How do you, how do you identify their needs? And how do you respond to them? What's that process like?
Of course, through the city website, you can get all of the city councilors and the mayor's email address. I'm also in the real estate business, so a lot of people have my contact information in the surrounding area, just by virtue of what I do.
Yeah.
I'm heavily involved in the Chamber of Commerce. Not only as far as the city council part is involved, but, you know, planning and zoning, you know, I've attended a number of those meetings for personal and professional reasons. And, and so just my interaction with people in the city, and really, the Chamber of Commerce has been one of the greatest tools for that, because you're talking to the business leaders in town. And so that is a great connection to your constituency. But then also, just being involved in different things at church and in your neighborhood. And, I mean, everything from a hayride to a picnic. When people find out you're a city councillor, they have questions and comments. And I try to take all of those to heart.
So just being present?
Being present.
Gotcha. Being present at different events and things like that. So you mentioned that you're into real estate. How did you get started in that career, in that industry?
It's interesting. I became an auctioneer before I became a real estate agent and broker, subsequently a broker. But I always knew that I wanted my auction specialty to be real estate. And then as I-
So like auctioning off real estate?
Auctioning real estate, correct.
Okay, okay.
And so I found that what I call the traditional selling of real estate, listing, putting a sign in the yard, putting it in the multiple listing service, worked hand-in-hand with the auction realm. And so there are certain types of properties that bode well with an auction process. And then there are other types of properties that bode well with what I call their traditional brokerage. And so I get to offer both of those. I will say that the traditional brokerage aspect of my business probably takes up 80% to 90% of my time, more so than the auction end of things. Also, in the auction end of things, not only do I auction real estate, but I'm also what I call a benefit auctioneer, where I work for certain nonprofits across the southeast, where they hire me to come in for their galas and their events, where I do a benefit fundraising auction, offer those types of services. But I just, I've always loved real estate. And I knew from the time that I was a young man, that I wanted to be involved in real estate in some way. And so getting my license, and subsequently, my brokerage license was the way to do that.
How long ago was that?
22 years.
Wow. So you've been doing this for a little while.
Been, I've seen a number of cycles. I survived 2009, which you would need another podcast for me to discuss that. But with its ups and downs, I'll tell you something that I said when the economy did downturn in '08, '09.
Yeah.
I told my wife, I said, you know what? During the Great Depression, Firestone sold tires, Ford sold cars, somebody sold suits, somebody sold groceries.
Yeah.
I sell real estate. It's what I do. I didn't have a choice. And I stuck it out. And with the Lord's help and a little bit of determination, and thankfully, I was not head over heels in debt, we survived. And so we came out on the other side of that. And it was a scary time, but it let me know that I was doing exactly what I was supposed to be doing.
Nice. What would you say are some of the biggest challenges of like, operating a real estate business in a small city like this?
Well, some of the challenges are, you know, a lot of people. And sometimes it hurts your feelings when a friend or someone that you know really well does not use you to sell their home. How could that happen?
He's talking to you, Steve.
Exactly. And, which is really funny. So you got to put your feelings aside. But one of the things that I have found out is that we provide a very important service. Now, I'm not doing brain surgery. Let's, let's not make it more important than it is. But, you know, I'm handling probably the largest asset that anyone will ever own, besides maybe a great retirement account, or perhaps a business.
Yeah.
It's their largest investment. And maybe even sometimes to a fault, I take every transaction very personally, because it is their largest investment that they may ever make.
And homes are, homes are personal-
Very.
Very personal things.
One of the things that's also difficult is when you walk into someone's home, they're looking to you as the professional. Now, when I go see my doctor, I don't like it when my doctor says, you're fat, you need to lose weight. When I walk into someone's house, and maybe it's a little cluttered, or not as fresh as I might want it to be, I'm the doctor. And I have to sit that patient down and say, okay, we need to declutter, we need to paint here. I still love you, and I want to be your real estate broker, but we really need to do these things.
Yeah.
And if it's taken in the right heart, they understand I'm just trying to help them. So that part can be a little difficult. But then, just like when I take my medicine and I do things the doctor says to do, and I feel better at the end of the day, when those clients listen to you, and they realize that, hey, he was looking out for our best interests. One of the greatest stories, if I could just tell a real quick story, and this is why I love what I do in real estate.
Yeah.
A lady in her 80s, lived on the eastern side of town. She wanted me to sell her home. She was going to move to Georgia to move in with her daughter. I won't call her name. But this was just the sweetest lady. As we were selling her home, we realized that there was a problem with a deed that was accidentally filed that included part of her property. And of course, she thinks someone's going to take her land, and she's just beside herself. And I told her, I said, just don't worry, until we have something to worry about, this will work out and we'll be okay. And so we held her hand and figured out what the issue was. And it was just a complete mistake on someone else's part who had inadvertently put the wrong legal description on a deed. I walk into her house, and I say, the problem is fixed. This little lady stood there with tears down her cheeks, hugged my neck, and said, we couldn't have done this without you. Now, you may think that's corny. I don't care. It wouldn't have mattered if I'd made $1 commission on that sale. That hug and those tears was worth every bit of trouble that we went through to sell that home. Corny or not, that's why I love what I do.
Changing lives and helping people do things that are very important to them.
Absolutely. Again, I don't want to make it sound more important than it is. But I'm telling you, if I had someone that was helping me to sell my largest investment, something that I had poured 30 years of my life into, I would want to make sure that that person or their company, and there are a lot of good realtors in our area, a lot of wonderful, wonderful realtors that have this same heart that I do, I would want to know that that person had my best interest at heart.
Yeah. Well, you want to be able to trust.
Absolutely right.
Right? What are some popular reasons that you see people choosing to move into Gardendale?
Gardendale, you know, golly, if I can just sound like a little commercial for a minute, Gardendale's just still a wonderful bedroom community.
Yeah.
You know, I live right on a major park, a major artery of our city. It's so cool, because when I'm at my home, even though I live on a major artery through our city, I still feel like I'm a million miles away from everyone. But then I can literally, in five minutes, be to Walmart, Tractor Supply, go get a hamburger at McDonald's. If I need medical care, I'm five minutes away from a surgical center. I'm seven minutes away from a freestanding emergency room with UAB. It's just the best of all worlds. I'm close to I-65. And I think those are things that we offer. We've got housing from, in every price bracket, from the lowest to the highest. We've got some wonderful multifamily in our town. There's just a lot to offer from, and we're growing continually. There's a lot of things on the horizon that I can't announce. But we're so close, so close to having, to making a grand announcement for these things that are going to be great for all of our citizens.
Yeah.
And so, young or old or in between, we've just, in my opinion, and I'm a little, you know, bent toward Gardendale, obviously, for obvious reasons.
Yeah.
It's just a great place to live. It's just a great place to live. Work, play, and live is what we say.
So that combo- So that combination of like, hey, I've got the peace and quiet and privacy that I want, but the convenience of, you know, that big city living, which is kind of, you know, it's not, it's not next door, but it's close enough.
Right. And getting on the municipal side of things, you know, you, you don't, you never like to see blue lights behind you when you've been driving a little too fast. But if you have any type of trouble, oh, those blue lights are the most beautiful thing you've ever seen.
Yeah.
Same, same way with the red lights on the fire trucks. Uh, I hope I never see a fire truck pull in my driveway to put out a fire. But I will tell you that our police and our fire in the city of Gardendale, I would put them against anyone in the entire state of Alabama. They are top notch. We've got excellent leadership in all of our departments. But in our police and fire, I'm telling you, the, the quality of our fire and police protection is second to none in Gardendale. And to me, as, uh, having reared my family here and I have a, a mother in her eighties that fortunately is very healthy now, but I know if she needs assistance that I can't provide, it's literally moments away.
That's great.
There are other municipalities and other cities that I don't know that they can say that, but I know I can say it about Gardendale.
Yeah. Well, let's look at the other side of the coin. Why do people sell? Why do, why do people leave Gardendale?
Oh, that's the age old question that we've been asking ourselves. And I appreciate you asking that because it's a difficult question and, and it deserves an answer. You hear all the stories, you know, I grew up in Gardendale. I, I don't want to live here for the rest of my life. Um, or Gardendale doesn't have anything for me, you know? I, I want to go and spread my wings somewhere else. And those are all valid comments. Um, I think there may be a perception or a, um, a, a missed perception, if you will, that, um, as a young college graduate, maybe there, there's nothing really here to, to keep them here. But with the shopping and the restaurants that are growing every day, with the addition of our incredible medical facilities, the, uh, forty-something million dollar investment that U A B has made in the city of Gardendale, along with Brookwood making an investment, St. Vincent's Ascension making an investment in Gardendale. Um, we have a lot of highly qualified positions, uh, open, uh, that, that take very specific qualifications, you know, in the medical field.
Job opportunities?
Absolutely. Job opportunities in, right here in the city of Gardendale. And with the, the multifamily living that we can offer, as well as the single family homes, the, the many diverse, different types of neighborhoods that we have. And, and if you don't want to work in the medical field, then we've got other areas that you can go into. There's just a lot to offer here that I think maybe if, if some of our younger people would give Gardendale a second look, they might be surprised.
So you think it's younger people that are mostly selling and moving?
I think the younger people are the most apt to do that. Because again, I, I remember, I'm fifty-two now. I remember when I was young and full of vinegar and, uh, I just wanted to get out and expand my horizons, but I soon found out that there's no place like home. And so I, I can't blame anyone for maybe wanting to try something different. But it's always neat when you hear that, uh, young person or young couple, as they start to rear their children, they come back and you find out that they missed the atmosphere in Gardendale. And that lets me know that we're doing something right. So can I say it's a particular demographic? I can't necessarily say that, but I think younger people starting their lives are more apt because they're, they're looking for the next adventure.
Well, I think it's valuable to explore because you don't want to, you don't want to stay exactly in the exact same spot because there is a lot of experience out there that is going to give you that appreciation.
Absolutely.
You know, like what you're saying is like, yeah, later in their life, they appreciate what Gardendale is offering, but they didn't have that appreciation until.
Sure.
Until they, they explored a little bit. You know, my wife and I talk about how there, there's kind of a difference between people who have traveled and people who haven't.
Certainly, certainly.
And just when you, when you travel and when you see different things and you're, and you're, you're out there exploring more, it really can help you hone in on what is valuable to you.
Absolutely. And you know, let me, let me take my city councillor hat off for just a moment and let me just be a citizen, if I may. Let's not kid ourselves. There are some absolutely incredible municipalities within thirty minutes of us, forty-five minutes of us. Places that I enjoy shopping and eating and, uh, going to theaters or visiting friends that live in these different areas. We're, we're not so blind to see that there aren't areas in close proximity to Gardendale that have a lot to offer. And, and that's wonderful. That's great. But I think when you get right down to the breast tacks, it's just hard to beat. Um, I, I don't want to just call it a feeling because a feeling is, uh, what you, what you kind of make of it. But we've just got a lot of great citizens in Gardendale. And, and again, my councillor hat is off, but I can tell you before I was a councillor, uh, our mayor, and, and I, I'm not trying to win any points with him. I felt this way long before I was a city councillor. We've got a wonderful mayor. And I don't know, there are some wonderful mayors out here in our surrounding municipalities. I don't know that there's a one that loves his city or cares for his city anymore than Stan Oakland. And, uh, there again, sometimes around this table, we absolutely teetotally disagree.
Yeah.
But at the end of the day, he may be on side A, I may be on side B, but we both want what's best for the city.
Yeah.
And I love that. So we've just got a lot to offer, just a lot to offer here.
Well, that's good. That's good. It's good to have that amount of, you know, inspiration and passion, especially if you're going to be a city councilman. So I think that's.
Yeah. And, and I've always loved Gardendale. You know, the big joke, uh, is, is when I was a kid growing up in another municipality, um, and it had a wonderful childhood, but I, I kid that even then I wanted to live in Gardendale. I knew that in my adulthood, I wanted to live in Gardendale. And I moved around a little bit. There again, that example of that younger person.
Yeah.
Spreading their wings, but I love Gardendale.
Well, how do you think that, because the only constant is change, right?
Uh, you have that right.
How do you preserve what Gardendale has that you think is so valuable and you're so passionate about? How do you preserve that?
You know, it, it really boils down to the people. And, and when we talk about preserving, let's, let's develop that for just a moment. Um, there's an old, old joke that coming up on Thanksgiving, that there's this young lady that when she put the ham in the oven for Thanksgiving, she cut the little tip off of the ham before she put it in the oven. And her husband said, but why are you cutting that off? And she said, because my mother always did. And so it got her to thinking and she asked her mother, said, well, mom, why, you know, uh, uh, John just asked me why I cut the tip off the ham and I didn't know what to tell him. And, and I just told him, because you always did it. So why do we do that, mom? And her mom said, because grandma always did.
So nobody knows where the ideas come from.
So they get, they, they get on the phone with grandma and say, grandma, we don't understand. Said, you know, we've always cut the tip off the end of the ham when we put it in the oven. What's up with that? Why did you do that? We, we just realized we've been blindly doing that for forty, fifty years. And she started laughing. She said, oh, honey, it's because my oven was so small, the ham wouldn't fit in there. Preserving tradition for the sake of preserving is no good for anyone.
Hmm.
Here's what I feel like my challenge is. We want to foster Gardendale to be such a community. Look, the only thing that is truly constant is change. You just said it. There are great traditions and like our Christmas parade and things like that. Those are traditions that I hope carry on for years. But if you'll look back, our Christmas parades have even changed through the years. There's one thing to hang on to a tradition and then there's another thing to be said for, well, we've always done it that way.
Yeah.
I don't want to live in that kind of town that just does it because that's the way we've always done it. And that's why I say, I know that my ideas, I may have some good ones, but not all of my ideas are good. We want the public input. I want to hear what our other councillors have to say. I want to hear what our chamber members have to say about their challenges in business. But we've always done it this way. That's not good enough. And in an age where information is so readily available, uh, and when change is happening so expediently and so fast, you don't want to have change just for the sake of change. But at the same time, you also don't want to cling to something just because it's the way you've always done it.
Yeah.
I think our challenge is to foster the kind of community where people feel free to come here and be who they are and to live, work and worship and feel a freedom to do those things. But at the same time, do it with a sense of community. And then we can pepper in the things like the Christmas parades and, and, and I use that because that's coming up, of course. And the things, the traditional things we've always done, something that I've participated a lot in, um, has been our Veterans Day where we recognize our veterans up at our Veterans Park in North Gardendale. Uh, those are the kind of things, yes, I will cling to with every ounce of my being. But I want Gardendale to be a city where people feel welcome and people feel like they can come, raise a family, be a part of a community and know that they're going to be around people that are glad they're here.
So you think that the way to preserve that, that feeling and that, uh, that culture of Gardendale is to ensure that the cult, that the community of Gardendale is kept intact and that people, people are being neighborly?
That's exactly my point. And you said it so much better than I did. Uh, I got a little loquacious there for a minute, but you know, if I never go over and say hi to my neighbor, my name is Brian, there's a very good chance my neighbor will never know who I am. So that means if my neighbor doesn't come to me first, it is incumbent upon me to go be the neighbor. So here's my challenge. Go be the neighbor. Don't wait on them to come to you. You go to them. You may get a door slammed in your face, but you know what? I'm in sales. I've had a door slammed in my face before. So, uh, the act of being neighborly means you've got to be the neighbor.
Yeah.
And I think that's a, uh, a, a good way to, to put it. You just gotta, you've got to be the neighbor. You can't wait on the neighbor to come to you.
Yeah. I think that's a great point. Well, you, you mentioned a little bit about your auctioneering past and things like that.
Yes.
I really am excited to talk to you about this because I think that this is a really fascinating.
I love to talk about.
Okay, let's do it. So how did you get started in auctioneering?
I have always been interested in the auction method of marketing, which most people today equate with, hey, now I bet a hundred and a half seventy-five, two and a quarter, two and a half seventy-five, three and a half, three and a half, I have sold it two seventy-five. The bid calling, the chant, if you will.
That's, I mean, that's the tradition. That's the culture. That's like, you know, the, the visual and the tone that everybody associates.
Absolutely right. And I could teach you to call bids in five minutes. It's quite simple.
All right.
Uh, but I knew I always wanted to be involved with that, just like I wanted to be involved in real estate. So actually I began my auction career before I began my real estate career.
Okay.
And the two have just really worked hand in hand together. But I, you know, there's no other way to put it. I literally woke up one day in my middle twenties, had a career company car, worked for a company that I could have had a job at until the day that I die. But I said, if I'm going to do this, I've got to do it now. And so I started the wheels rolling.
Yeah.
Went to auction school, which later I became an instructor at that auction school. And I, I'm a teacher at heart, so I love teaching auction school. I don't get to do it anymore because of time constraints. But, uh, for about eight years, I taught students, uh, at an auction school in Tennessee. Uh, made friends all over the country with auctioneering. I served on the board of the National Auctioneer Association.
Yeah.
Spent ten years on the State Board of Auctioneers, the licensing entity for the state of Alabama. Um, was a past president twice of the Alabama Auctioneers Association. I was the two thousand and one Alabama champion auctioneer. And that ring that I wear, I was the two thousand and seven international champion.
Best auction, auctioneer in the entire world.
Yeah, that, that's the rumor. And the joke with all my friends is it was the bathing suit competition that put me over the top. I'm kidding, of course. Um, the contest was put on by the National Auctioneer Association. They do it every year. And, uh, they judge you obviously on your bid calling, your stage presence. They're looking for an ambassador for the auction industry.
Yeah.
Uh, because of winning the I E C, the International Auctioneer Championship, uh, I did a commercial for Comedy Central. I had a TV show on the History Channel called Real Deal that I served as auctioneer. Um, it opened a, just a myriad of doors for me in the auction industry and I'm very grateful.
Is it, I don't know much about the auction industry. Is it a big industry? Is it huge? Okay, so it's a big.
And then there are so many facets and I apologize. I, I would have done a little more homework before our interview, but, uh, you, you talk about a multi-billion dollar industry just in the United States alone. And then I've got auctioneer friends from all over the world. I've got a, an auctioneer friend, uh, named Joff in South Africa.
Yeah.
Um, and, and friends, uh, in England and all over the world. It's, it's, and it's a very different process in, in those areas, as you could imagine. Um, but the auction method of marketing is fun because, um, it's, it's very definite and very time constrained. Uh, if you want to buy this item, whether it's a multimillion dollar piece of real estate or grandma's blanket at an estate sale, uh, you better be there on that day at that time because it's going to sell. Now, another thing that's been thrown into that mix are internet auctions. And with, with my company, I also do internet auctions that are timed internet events. Some people call it eBay style, but it's different from eBay in that the, the timed auction runs out, there is competitive bidding. Where our system is a little different is if you go in and you type in an internet bid in the last two minutes of that item, it automatically extends the bidding for three more minutes.
Oh snap.
So it keeps the auction running just like a live auction.
That way you don't get those people surging.
The sniping, I think they call it, where they snipe, they come in and pow, they put that bid in in the last second.
Yeah.
Get the item. Not on my.
And there's no way to defend against that.
Right. But with our system.
I think that system's a lot more honest because there is no way to defend against somebody coming in at the last moment. It's like, yeah, I was willing to go higher, but I didn't have an opportunity to go higher. So this allows the item to sell at the highest price that it can sell at and it allows the buyer to be the one who wanted it the most.
Yes. There's, there's two things, um, that I love to see happen at an auction. Again, keeping in mind, most of my auctions are real estate related now, but I've, I've sold everything, everything you could imagine. Uh, I, I, I hope I'm calling it the proper term. A funeral buyer, I believe it is, that the casket sits on, I've sold one of those at auction.
Okay.
I've sold every kind of moldy blanket you could dig out of a closet at auction. And then I've sold everything from hotels to lake properties to, uh, commercial property to single family homes.
What's your favorite item you've ever sold?
Oh, everybody always asks me that. You know, there is no one particular item. The large real estate pieces, you know, obviously because there's such a, um, a wonderful opportunity for earning for, on a large piece of real estate is fun. But it's also fun at the old estate auctions to see two people fight over grandma's blanket.
Gotcha.
It is an amazing process.
Two, two, uh, grandsons just outbidding each other.
Outbidding it because I'm going to get grandma's blanket or grandpa's gun or grandma, you know, whatever. But what I was going to say, when I, when I'm at an auction, if we're talking about a live auction event, two things I want to hear, I want to hear my seller go, oh my gosh, I cannot believe that you got that much for my item.
Yeah.
And I want that seller or that buyer rather, I want the buyer going, oh my gosh, I can't believe I spent that much at your auction. That's when you know you've had a successful auction.
Gotcha.
I, I tell you what, I, when I would teach auction school, here's the, I would begin my class and I would say, oh, cla- okay, class, here's, here's what we're going to teach you to do. And, and bid calling, of course, the, the fun part is a small, small part of it. But what we're going to teach you to do is to walk into a room, reach out your arms to that entire room, give them all a great big hug while you're reaching into their back pocket and taking their money. That's what an auction does. You, you draw the people in with the chant and your stage presence and you invite them to participate. And the last one to participate is the winner, but it's going to cost them.
It's a, it's a, a way of like, sort of making people feel this pressure that everything is coming down and if you don't take action now, you're going to lose.
Now or never. It's now or never. And I don't like to call it pressure. I like to call it encouragement.
Okay. Yeah, 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 yeah.
And, uh, and that's one thing that's so fun. You know, there's a lot of pressure when you're doing a real estate auction. But one of the other facets of my business is working with nonprofits, doing benefit auction work. Uh, go to their gala and you're selling everything from African safaris to fine art or summit experience, you know? There's not the pressure at those auctions. You still want to do a good job for your client because you're there to raise money. But it's a much more fun atmosphere, a more party atmosphere. And, um, a lot less pressure and a lot more fun.
I've been to one of those before for the Alabama Wildlife Center.
Yes.
They do that to raise money.
Yes.
It was, it was the first time I'd ever been to an auction and I didn't, I didn't know that that, I thought that was what happened in movies.
Yes.
You know, and then I saw it for the first time. You know, and then I saw it for the first time. I was like, whoa.
That organization, oddly enough, it actually called me to ask me to do an auction for them, but I had a scheduling conflict and I was unable to do that for them. So I'm familiar with that group. And, uh, uh, an auction is just a fun way to spend money, and it's a fun way to earn money.
Yeah. Well, you say teaching people to be auctioneers and there's a skill to it, right?
It's, it's very simple. So here, I, I'm going to break it down into its most elementary elements.
Okay.
Don't know if that's the proper way to say that. So there's the number that you have. I have thirty dollars. Let's say someone has bid thirty dollars for an item.
All right.
So now I'm asking, let's say hypothetically, for thirty-five dollars. So I have thirty. I'm asking thirty-five. What you do in the middle is what makes it fun. You use a filler word. So a filler word can be anything. You take the filler word and you slur the filler word.
Okay.
Which gives an illusion of talking faster. And then you add rhythm or a cadence to it.
Okay.
That makes it melodic. So I, I could go, I have thirty dollars. Would you bid thirty-five? And that's boring. You know, put me to sleep.
Yeah.
So now let's slur the filler word. Let's say able to buy them. Thirty dollars, able to buy them at thirty-five. That's still boring. So now I'm going to slur the filler word. Thirty dollars, able to buy them thirty-five. Thirty dollars, able to buy them thirty-five. Now I'm going to add the rhythm.
Yeah.
Thirty dollar, able to buy them thirty-five, five, five, thirty-five, and thirty dollar, able to buy them thirty-five. So I've taken able to buy them, and I've slurred it to able to buy them. Thirty, able to buy them thirty-five. And so now I've just made it fun. You're smiling.
I am.
You can't help but smile.
This is so cool.
It's just fun. And so it, it's so simple and yet so effective.
Yeah, okay.
And, uh, and, and you know, you talk about the auction being fun. Let's, let's turn back kind of to the city government thing. City government doesn't have to be dull and boring. Uh, I find it very exciting, just like I want to interact with the people at the auction. I want to interact with our people of the city, and I want it to be a positive experience. And look, if you got a pothole in your street or there's some problem that we have to address, those are not fun. But why can't we do it in a way where there's mutual respect? And, and we walk away with a solution. And so that's what an auction does. Here's your problem. You need to sell some earphones.
Yeah.
I have the solution. I'm going to make it sell in a fun way. And the people that are buying them are going to have fun. And so that's why an auction works.
Yeah, I can see that. So you said that you were in a competition and you won, and that is, to me, that's pretty crazy that you were like, best in the whole world. I'm sitting next to Mr. Auction Universe.
Well, I don't know about that. You know, there, there were, in the year that I competed, and it's every year, you can only win it once. It's kind of like Miss America, you know, you only win it once.
Okay.
There were about a hundred and one auctioneers, I think. And, uh, if, if you get on YouTube, which you can find anything on YouTube now, uh, look up Brian Knox, uh, Brian with a Y, two thousand and seven IAC. It stands for International Auctioneer Championship. More than likely, you're going to see a video of me. It was a lot of fun. Uh, again, they judge you on your stage presence. They judge you on your bid calling. They're looking for an ambassador. They, they judge you on how you get the crowd to interact with you. And if you'll watch that video, you'll see one of the first things that I do when I step up on stage, rather than saying, hey, everybody, look at me. I'm this great and wonderful auctioneer, which I would never say because I don't feel that way about myself, because there were some really good auctioneers that day that were there. And I was honored to be included among them. But I walk out on stage and I say, ladies and gentlemen, let's thank everyone with the National Auctioneer Association that had anything to do with putting this, uh, event on. And so all thousand people in the crowd are now clapping.
Yeah.
And so that helped me to win points for my initial command.
I feel like you're a magician.
I'm not a magician.
I feel like you're, you're like sleight of handing and like, it's all, it's all for the presence of the show and everything. Like it's, it's all an entertainment value.
It, but look what, look what I just said, though. How did I gain those first initial points? I got the crowd involved. And how did I get them involved?
Yeah.
By putting the spotlight on someone else. Now, I don't mean to get too deep here.
Yeah, yeah.
But there's a lesson there. We can spend all of our time telling people how great and wonderful we are, and our product is the best product and da, 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 da. But what it boils down to is I garnered that attention because I put attention on someone else. And that is a huge lesson in the world that we live in. Talks about the being neighborly thing.
Yeah.
Look, we can run around here trying to prove to everyone how wonderful we are. I have found that if we make people feel good about themselves, uh, that they'll normally feel pretty good about you too. And so there we are in our city. Again, I keep turning back to that. What I do as an auctioneer, I make people feel good about being there.
Yeah.
People feel good about spending money, and I make people feel good about what they're buying. Same thing with our city. Let's, let's let everybody know that Gardendale is a wonderful place to live. Sure. Yeah, there's other great municipalities. Uh, and, and we're going to brag on what they do well. But Gardendale's a pretty doggone nice place to live.
Yeah.
And, uh, and the way that we make it that way is by being neighborly.
Well, I think that, I think that's a great comment. I've got a couple more questions here.
Sure.
I was curious, you have obviously a lot of extensive work in auctioneering and in real estate and in city counseling. How do you balance all three of these things with your private life? With making sure that, you know, you're making sure that everything has enough time and enough attention to it, and you're not disrespecting your family?
Sure. Uh, well, first, Mitzi, my wife and I, we're empty nesters. Our children are grown. Uh, I have to give you a little bit of our background. Um, Mitzi and I both were widow and widower. She tragically lost her husband, uh, to a massive heart attack. I had a wife that was just a, a precious soul that succumbed to breast cancer after a two-year battle. And, uh, the Lord saw fit to bring us together. So Mitzi and I belong to what we call the Eat Your Dessert First Club. And by that, I mean, life is too short not to enjoy. So going along with your question, uh, we try to make sure that we take every opportunity to enjoy our life together. And if that means eating dessert first, then so be it. Let's eat dessert first. By that, we do a lot of things together. She's very supportive of me. I try to be very supportive of her as well. But you have to understand, in real estate, it's very demanding, but real estate is not eight to five. Uh, I start long before eight. Many times it's long after five before I'm finished. But then there's sporadic freedom throughout the day. I may go from ten AM to three PM and not be bombarded. So that allows me to spend time on city business. And there's many times that I come to meetings here at City Hall, do things like this, like we're doing the podcast, or participate in the department head meeting or things like that. And so while, uh, I'm not having to work real estate, I can work on the city business. And then in between that, my wife and I just try to make sure to spend every moment that we can together and, and just enjoy each other. Now, again, we're empty nesters. We don't have small children at home. We love to set aside time. We try to be very cognizant of the fact that some days you just have to disappear.
Yeah.
And so I have learned to put my phone down, make sure that some of our very incredibly qualified people at our real estate firm can handle anything while I'm gone. And sometimes my wife and I will just get in the car and ride.
Yeah.
And, and spend that time together. So it, it can be a juggling act. And there's also different times of year that are busier. Uh, with the city council, we're very busy during budget season. With real estate, we're very, very busy in the spring season. And, and they all just seem to work well together.
Yeah.
But there are times, though, that we have to just take a step back. And I look at her and she looks at me and go, okay, we're getting away from here. And we just take that time.
So there's a, enough flexibility in each of these disciplines that sort of allows them to overlap.
They do, definitely. Um, it would be very hard to be a city counselor if I had to punch a clock at eight in the morning, uh, until four in the afternoon. Because in that sitting, setting, you, you have to be laser focused and you can't be drawn away. In, in, in my work, many times that focus is at different times of the day, and it, it works well together. It really does. Very fortunate.
There's a, a second act of balancing in that you are a city councilman and you own a business in the city that you counsel.
Yes.
How do you balance the conflict of interest that that could represent?
We try to all be very, very careful, you know, uh, with the different backgrounds. We've got, um, two people that work for very large corporations in the area. We've got an insurance representative for a very large insurance company. Different, different and diverse backgrounds. We've got a, a retired gentleman that serves. And, uh, of course, our mayor, his background is in municipal government. He was a city employee for many, many years. One thing that we all try to be cognizant of is as we're voting on resolutions or, uh, passing an ordinance or discussing anything that could even, you know, the Bible says flee all appearance of evil. And, and we kind of take a stance of, if there's any way it could even remotely be observed, even if there is no conflict of interest, but even if it's observed, we ask questions about it. Through the league of municipalities in Montgomery, we can actually call their legal department. And if there's something coming up, hey, we've got a counselor that is involved in this industry. We're going to be voting on this. Is that a conflict of interest? And, and we take that to, there again, wisdom in a multitude of counsel.
Yeah.
And so we all try to be very, very careful about that. And so there, there is a balancing act. You know, you never want to do anything that can be per, even perceived as, okay, well, they're only doing that for their own benefit. And, and there are times, quite frankly, when we just have to take a step back and I can't vote on this, or I cannot participate in this discussion.
Yeah.
Because you don't want to have that undue influence. And, uh, you know, at the end of the day, whether my political career is further down the road one day, or I'm, I'm one and done with, with, uh, with one four-year period that I serve, whatever the, the public desires or whatever the Lord would have. I would hate to leave it and leaving the taste in people's mouths that, well, he was just self-serving. I think that would be tragic. Now, that's easy to sit here and say, because it sounds good and it's a good soundbite. The proof is in the pudding of how I conduct myself on a daily basis. And I hope and I pray that I would conduct myself in a manner to where they, everyone in our city knows, hey, that counselor, that council, that mayor, they're going to give us a fair shake.
Yeah.
That would be my ultimate goal at the end of the day. Because quite frankly, uh, nobody's going to remember what kind of toys I had or how big my house was, or, you know, what color suit I had on. But at the end of the day, uh, when we meet our maker, people are going to remember how you treated them. And I think we need to work on doing the best we can in that arena.
Yeah, okay. Well, I, I normally ask two last questions to every guest. I feel like you've already answered the first one. Uh, it's what is something that you love about Gardendale? We've answered that one over and over again.
Do love our town.
So I want to ask you this last one. What is something that you think Gardendale could improve on?
Oh, my goodness. What could Gardendale improve on? You know, we can always, and boy, this is going to sound like a politician's answer. Please forgive me. We can always improve in every area. You know, I would love for every street to have a fresh coat of pavement, a fresh coat of pavement. Um, we give, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars to our local schools every year. You know, I would love to see that number increase. And because we, we're partnering with our wonderful schools in this area. There are some things that we wanted to see happen that are already happening. We just got a brand new, uh, turf football field for our football players and our football team. I would love to see our city council be more efficient in, in doing our duties. So there's a lot of different ways that I could say, oh, I would love for Gardendale to be better at this. You know, I want to see more city, uh, I want to see more policemen on the street, not because we have a problem, but there's strength and power. So I want to see our police department grow. I want to see our fire department grow, not because we have a problem, but as our population grows and houses are being built, I, I want to see that department grow.
So you want to see, uh, the effectiveness of Gardendale's institutions increase?
Uh, again, you said it so much better than I could. It's really, it's really hard to say, oh, I want this to be better. I mean, sure, could I pinpoint one little pet project? Sure. But I don't think that would be fair. There's always room for improvement. I want to be a better city counselor. This is my, just completing my first year as a city counselor. Do you think I've got some things to learn? Brother, you better know it.
Always.
I've learned a lot.
Yeah.
But I got a long way to go. And, uh, again, without trying to just sound corny or political, I love what I do. I want to be better at it. And fortunately, I get to serve with a city council and a mayor that foster that growth. We may disagree, but we're not in here fighting every week either.
Yeah.
And so I hope I become a better city counselor because of that.
Well, I think that's a great way to end it off, Brian. Thank you so much for joining me today on the, on the podcast.
It's been a wonderful interview, a wonderful experience, and I thank you for inviting me.
Is there anything that you wanted to say before we close out?
You know, it, it's just a pleasure to serve and a pleasure to live in Gardendale. And I can't think of anywhere else that I would rather be.
All right. Well, thank you for listening to the Your City Podcast, and I hope you enjoyed today's conversation with Brian Knox. If you enjoyed the show, you can help us out and support the show by donating to us on PayPal by using the link in the description to help us keep making the show and improving it. There's more that we would like to do with this idea, and we would appreciate any support in helping us to achieve our goal of creating better communities, not just for Gardendale, but for other cities as well. Thank you for listening, and we will catch you on the next one.